Call this meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before we start with roll call, there was a lot of paper dropped off in front of your places. There are several documents regarding the audit. There is a document regarding the rental housing certification. And there is also an update regarding metric marketing. That's at your spot that we will discuss each as we come along. Moving on to roll call, members present, Mr. Girba, Mr. CEO, Mr. Lesch, Ms. Harmout, and Mayor Pro Tem Dillon. From staff, we have City Manager Swallow, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Finch, Community Development Director Atkins.
Thank you.
Oh, and then we have Mr. Briggs, Superintendent Briggs. Moving forward, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted or amended?
I'd like to add rec. send or update to the notes in the announcement.
Exactly. That's... So moving, will you move as amended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the motion was moved by Girba, seconded by CEO. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Rice and Mayor Marl.
For movement.
Thank you, Mr. Lesch. Second from Mr. CEO. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public comment on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward to make a comment or ask questions about any item on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested, but not required, to state their name and address for the record. Before you begin with your comments, please clearly state the specific agenda item you are addressing. Please note, council will not answer questions during public comment. Is there any public comment from the audience?
Hello, good evening. My name is Hans Lechner. I live in the Wildwood subdivision here in Saline. And the item I would like to address on the minutes is minutes from the last meeting, November 17th, specifically the item in the minutes regarding the Flock cameras. I wanted to speak at last meeting, but personal issues drove me away from it. Anyways, I would like to go on record as in opposition of the Flock cameras. And I have three reasons, if I may share them with you, why. First is cost of those cameras. I mean, $24,000 a year may seem like a pittance, but it seems somewhat unreasonable to use taxpayer dollars to pay a private company to collect our private data. It also seems strange that we would pay to outsource police work to an AI. And I would think we could better spend that money investing in programs that have a proven track record of reducing crime, such as community outreach, community engagement, green space improvement, domestic violence intervention and counseling, economic development, social development, et cetera. All of these have been shown time and again to reduce crime. The second reason is there is a potential for abuse and misuse of those cameras. There are documented cases of law enforcement individuals misusing those data for their own purposes, their own individual selfish purposes. Now, all those may be outliers. It has happened, and there is a possibility. It's not beyond the realm of possibility. Additionally, these cameras seem like a clear violation of our Fourth Amendment rights, which bypassing legal warrants and probable cause. And as this country seems to be edging closer and closer to an authoritarian state with police surveillance, does the city of Saline really want to act as a stepping stone to get us one bit closer? Now, while these abuses may be real or perceived, this certainly does open the city up to the potential for litigation. Some instances of litigation that are currently occurring right now are have or do these Flock cameras. Norfolk, Virginia, the state of Washington, Richmond, Virginia, and most famously Aurora, Colorado, which settled for $1.9 million for abuse of the Flock cameras. So does Saline want to open itself up? And third, our data. AI is fallible, and it's been proven to be fallible. Secondly, the major investors in the Flock company are venture capitalists and data brokers, and their primary objective is to make money by selling data. When will they decide selling our personal data is better for them? Our data is also susceptible to theft and hacking. I would also like to know who has access to that data? Who will Saline PD share that data with? Who will Flock share that data with? Since it's our tax dollars paying for it, I expect to have access to it as well. And I would greatly appreciate that the city council did not approve the Flock cameras. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Anything else from the audience? Clerk Royal, were there any comments received?
Yes, we have one. It says, Dear Councilmembers and City Managers Swallow, I hope that as each of you consider a water and sewage rate increase for the citizens of Saline, that you also consider the fact that not only will you be increasing the cost of living for every residence, but you will be asking residents who still don't have clean water or who are still plagued by the stench from the treatment plant to pay more for a subpar service. Clean water is a right, and unless we plan to refund or exempt residents still experiencing groundwater from this rate increase, it's waterline disrespectful to ask more of our citizens financially, who we continue to let down. Not only do I urge you to vote no on this rate hike, I challenge you to go a step further and put a multi-year freeze on water and sewage rate hikes until every citizen can enjoy clean water and fresh air. There has been a lot of talk recently on how we can keep Saline affordable. Well, here's a chance to walk the talk. Do right by the citizens of the city and vote no. Thank you for your time and your service. Tremaine Hosh, Councilmember, Saline City Council.
Thank you very much. With no further public comment, let's move on to our first of two presentations this evening from Plant Moran. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name is Martin Alainik. I'm the chief of partner for the audit. With me is Josh Edie, who was the engagement manager. We'll be going through some of the documents that were passed along to you earlier this evening. I know you've received them electronically prior. We left out basically a book of documents earlier. There's probably about five or so deliverables. The main two items that we're going to focus on are the graphs, which are basically the highlight of the financial statements that are in front of you, which is probably like a 70-page document. So again, we're going to focus on the graphs, and Josh is going to go through those. And I'm going to cover the post-audit letter subsequently to that. A couple of things I did want to mention before is the financial statements themselves, the opinion letter, which is the only piece of the document that belongs to Plant Moran. It's an unmodified opinion, which basically in the accounting world means you can rely on the numbers that are presented in front of you based on our testing procedures, et cetera. Again, you can rely on them. And it's exactly what we should expect every single year, which is the keenest opinion that we provide. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Josh. And then following, I will cover some of the other documents that are in front. Thank you, Martin. So if you look at the graphs, so this is the document with all the colors on it. I will be walking through that. The first slide here shows the general fund revenue history for the last five years. As you can see, this year total revenue increased 1% to $13,813,000. The largest increase there was property taxes, which is up 7% to $8,677,000 due to higher taxable values in the current year. The next slide will show the other part of this, five-year history of general fund expenditures. Total expenditures increased 8% to $12,302,000. Largest change there was in general government, which is up 15%, and that is due to some vehicle equipment replacement costs as well as increased salaries and benefits. The next slide then shows a history of the general fund fund balance. So this is the equity, if you will, of the general fund, and it goes back to 2015. And so this shows the amounts that are unassigned versus those that are designated elsewhere. Fund balance increased this year, and a large portion of that fund balance is allocated for future expenditures. You can see there in that gray box. That's the assigned portion of the fund balance. The next slide shows a six-year history of capital expenditures. As you can see, that's what's going on for the last two years. And that green portion, which is the water and sewer improvements and repairs, and as you're probably aware, that's mostly the wastewater treatment plant. There were some other capital expenditures this year, Wildwood Trails, some HVAC things, vehicles. But really, that's the bulk of it, would be that wastewater treatment plant. The next slide shows a breakdown of the property taxes in the city of Saline. So these would be paid by principal and nonprincipal residences in the city. I do want to point out that a portion that stays within the city total, 17.75 mils. That's made up of the operating debt, solid waste, street improvements, and the fire special assessment. Also want to point out that that green bar there, that 18 mils, that is exempt for those that have principal residences here. The next slide will show then the mils legend comparison over those last six years compared to other communities. And you can see that Saline there, that's that red line, is comparable there to some of the other communities that we're showing here. The next slide shows a history of the Recreation Complex Fund for any contributions from the general fund. Revenue was up 1% this year, $1,427,000, and expenditures were up 7% to $1,879,000 for a net decrease of $4,052,000. The next slide shows the Water Fund. Revenues are up 6% to $3,257,000, and expenses are up 26% to $2,990,000. And you can see on the next slide, the Sewer Fund, which has revenue up 12% to $6,756,000, and expenses up 5% to $3,979,000. And I do want to point out that neither of these slides does show the investment capital assets the city is making. So you keep that in mind as you're looking at this and seeing, hey, the revenues are more than the expenditures. That's because that is being invested. The next slide would show the legacy costs. So here you have pension and the OPEB. And the idea here is to show the impact of the assumptions that are inherent to calculating. So the assumptions are really driving a lot here. Those are estimates. And we talk about those a little more detail in the letter. But you can see here pension is at a little over $10 million using the 7.15% discount rate that's used in the financial statements. But if that was to decrease to 6.18%, that pension liability would rise to just over $14 million. So those assumptions do have a significant impact. You can see retiree healthcare using the 7.5% healthcare trend rate as a net OPEB asset of about $429,000. But if that increases to 8.5%, that would move to $873,000 of an OPEB liability. With that, I'll hand it back to you. We're happy to address any questions you may have from the graphs, or I can proceed with the letter and then kind of address questions at that point. Whatever.
Come ahead.
Just a couple of things. And I did mention that I was going to cover the post-audit letter during this part. I did want to point out, too, that there's a couple other documents that are in front of you that are related to the federal single audit that was done this year. It's again related to the water and the sewer project that's ongoing. Since some of the money is related to federal funds, we had to go through a process that actually tests the procedures that are in place within the city just to make sure that you're in compliance with the federal guidelines. And I did want to point out that instead of going through page by page of the document, that is, I would say, one of the simpler documents because there's no findings or anything like that to be disclosed. Therefore, everything that we based on our testing, et cetera, the city wasn't compliant with the graphs. Exactly what we should expect is the same result as last year. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And with that, the post-audit letter. So this would be in relation to the pre-audit letter that you would have received a couple months back. This closes the process overall that occurred throughout the audit. There's two sections for the post-audit letter. One is the required communication to the authorities of governance, which is the city council. And then some legislative items, which are in section two, which are essentially items that would impact the city similarly to other communities within the state of Michigan. Mostly, it's items that are within the state as well as some federal items. So first, section one again talks about some of the items that have occurred during the audit in response to the pre-audit letter. I did want to point out that it is relatively plain letter to note that there's no disagreements with management. There were no significant items that we noted. There were no significant journal entries or anything like that as a result of the audit procedure. So the records that the city maintained were within compliance with what you would have expected. Section two, again, some of the legislative items. I will not go through point by point on those items for your reading pleasure. If you're having a hard time falling asleep or anything like that. But I did want to point out a couple things that are in here, a couple things that are, I would say, top of mind for a lot of folks. On page four, cybersecurity information technology items. This would be a very hot topic within a lot of communities and businesses around the state as well as the country, just with a lot of the cyber attacks, et cetera. Just want to make sure that the city keeps a focus on overall security within. And I'm not saying there was anything that we found that was wrong or anything like that. I just want to make sure that you're aware that, keep an eye on it, and if there's any help that you needed from Plant Moran or anything like that, we'd be happy to assist. And then one of the last items on page six. The documents are in draft form, which I'll explain momentarily why they're in draft. On page six, there's a new Gatsby pronouncement that's coming up for next year. It's related to financial reporting and model improvements. I did want to point out that it really doesn't have an impact on what the city does from day-to-day operations perspective. It's more of the reporting perspective, what's going to happen next year. So it's more of an impact of how the financial statements are going to be presented. Has nothing to do with budgeting or anything like that. So I just want to make sure that you're aware, and we will definitely help the city in implementing these changes. As I mentioned earlier, the documents are technically in draft form. The reason for that is we were waiting for a couple pieces of information over the last week or so in order to wrap up the audit. The numbers that are presented within have not changed or anything like that. And next day, I just received notification within the last couple of hours that they are finished and out of our processing department. So you will be receiving the finalized copies within the next year. So with that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address those.
Thank you very much. So we can start. Mr. Lesch, would you like to start with questions?
Ah, you know, problems are cut and dried. Thank you.
Mr. CEO?
I'm always happy to be bored with a plain vanilla report. Thank you very much for all your help.
Mr. Girba?
Just to make a statement, we've already talked during the pre-audit. Some of my concerns I've always addressed was related to payroll audits. We had performed that this year. Some other supplemental activities that were done to validate some of the information. And I know we got some of that information and data back. I believe what we look at is, the biggest concern for us is that when we looked at the budget-to-budget analysis that we were under budget this past year, which meant that projects weren't completed, that explains one of the reasons why the fund balance has probably increased. Although some of that's unassigned, we'll likely be assigning that in the future. For me, the only thing is, when we look at this, are there any concerns that we should be aware of from either a federal perspective or a state perspective at this time that you believe that we should be on the watch for?
I would say nothing that would keep me personally up at night or anything like that. I think the biggest things that I'd be keeping an eye on for are the sewer projects, just given the magnitude of the dollars being spent, making sure you're staying on top of it, making sure it's within budget, et cetera. I know how construction projects can happen. You know, like at my own house, there's overruns even with a small construction project. So I can only imagine with a significant project like this, there could be something that ends up happening over time. So just making sure that you stay on top of that. And the other item is the pension liability overall. I think the city's done a very nice job of maintaining a certain percentage that's funded, which is around 7%. This is a very good percentage to have to be funded. There's a lot of communities that wish they could be at that level. But it's something that's, you know, clearly the liability's not fully funded, and it's something that needs to be budgeted for and money put aside over the future years just to make sure that the liability can be paid for.
And then lastly, you had agreed with some recommendations that would help us address some property losses that we had in the past year and related to theft that occurred in the DPW and some of those aspects. Do you feel that those are being addressed at this point in time?
At this point in time, yes. But I believe I had some suggestions of what to do to just make sure that you're within the policies, maybe fine-tuning some of the policies within the city just to make sure nothing like that happens again. Maybe individually, the items are not significant, but clearly have kind of accumulated, et cetera, it could become a more significant dollar amount. So I just want to make sure that policies are followed.
And so we should make that as a recommendation of our council policy to make sure that it occurs with our staff and so forth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Summer?
I heard you about the on-budget with the project that's as big as the wastewater treatment plant, which kind of brings me into my second question is the debt service risk. If we are not to approve the rate increases, what does that do to our portfolio?
Yes, I've not seen the sewer, the water and sewer rate analysis per se. I do know that based on the performance over the last couple of years within the fund as well as some of the projections from what I've heard, there's definitely a certain dollar amount that's needed to fund the debt payments. The debt payments are going to be pretty significant over the next few years. And without having the rate increases typically, without having the money set aside, it puts the city in jeopardy of not being able to meet some of those debt obligations.
Are there other sources that we should be looking at that would offset that?
So within water and sewer funds, typically the users have to pay for those services. The other potential would be literally coming from the general fund, which is a property taxpayer.
If we're specifically talking about the debt service portion of it?
So the debt service portion for the sewer fund comes from the rate user, from the users of the system. So the other potential is always, you know, federal funding or state funding, which I know the city's already been giving some of those funds, but unfortunately, it hasn't been paid for full. So it does come down to the rate users or the rate payer.
That all?
Thank you. No, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentations. I think that I have a couple of questions and things I just wanted to touch upon if other people were watching this from the outside. One, and I think Mr. Girba touched on, as did you, Martin, which was that our fund balance number is so high, and it's tied to incomplete projects. We know that we've got a couple things like that. The other thing that I would be remiss if I didn't mention was slide number eight, which was the REC complex slide. Looking at the numbers for that, I mean, it's something that we are going to have to address as a city. When you start looking at the general fund contribution, the debt service contribution, those numbers are not sustainable. So thank you for bringing those numbers to our attention. Before we move on, is there anything else from council? Mr. Swallow, do you have anything?
I've signed up.
Okay. Treasurer, anything?
No, no, thank you for your question.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and your presentation this evening.
Thank you so much, and thank you again for getting to work with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tex is going to switch to the next presentation, which will be from People's Express, which is public transportation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Emily Miss Taylor, Intermandant Director of People's Express. We're an organization driven by purpose and powered by people. And tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit more about our services and hopefully renew a contract we've had, actually since the early 2000s. But the latest contract was from 2018 to 2021. And during the pandemic, we really prioritized keeping everyone safe and prioritizing residents. So we, between the city council and People's Express, decided to maintain structure and continued on verbally through that contract. And now we're here entering 2026. And we want to talk about ways we can improve services and also revisit the price structure. So just a quick overview. I'll go through the background of People's Express, touch on what transportation means to communities, an overview of our services, looking at estimated costs, details of those services, along with implementation. And then we have some appendices for you guys to look at, supporting data insights we look at. And then finally, discussion and next steps. To touch on our mission, People's Express is dedicated to providing safe and reliable public transportation to empower all individuals to maintain the independence and enhance the quality of life. quality of life with attention to undeserved populations. We're definitely a mission-driven organization, so I wanted to highlight that, and I also want to highlight the background on our agency, so we've been a nonprofit since 2007, but we take a little bit, a few steps back, we actually originated in the 90s as a program of our local food pantry, when we're like area human services, and that's really led us to an advantage of our Washtenaw County being our backyard. Today, we have 130 vehicles that allows us to scale services to meet local demands, and we provide demand response community-based transportation. That allows us to accommodate non-emergency medical, employment, grocery stores, and social trucks, pretty much, you name it, we got it, we're a one-stop shop for transportation. And I also wanted to highlight our commitment to data sharing and variable performance reporting to funding partners and local governments, especially as we're a direct recipient of state funding. When you look over to your right, this mobility leadership circle, you'll see essential resources such as food, education, housing, employment, social and community, even access to healthcare and elected officials like yourself. What we look at is how it all starts with transportation, what it means for our community to stay connected to one another, and how the leadership circle are all in a line. One of the big reminders of us in our communities is to look at how we can all become transit-dependent tomorrow, and how we have to think about transportation as a community utility, like your garbage pickup. Looking at your current services, we're providing residents transportation Monday through Friday, nine to five. Those who are able to provide services within boundaries for the general public at $4 and seniors at $2 per trip. For out-of-boundaries, when you go past the Judd, Judd Dell textile and Moon driving boundaries, it to Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti is $6, and then per mile pricing, we do offer discounted pricing for seniors and invisible disabilities at $1.25. Looking over some ridership data, first starting at 2024, we had 2,888 trips we provide annually, with October year-to-date for 2025 being at 1,892. Looking a little bit closer at that, we have a year-to-year comparison of the October month. In 2024, we provided 292 trips, and this last October is 143. I think one of the things that attribute to that is our relationship with the township, or with the city, and really forging awareness and education on the resource that residents have for them. The total ridership for this year can be broken out for demographics of 12% general public, 75% seniors with 7% people with disabilities, and then 6% with seniors that have a disability. When we look at trip purposes, we see that we have 32% education, or 5% medical, 32%, 5% educational, 32% medical, 36% personal, with 20% work and 3% grocery. Looking at a little wider scope, this is a map that kind of shows you how there is out-of-community traffic happening outside of Celine, particularly in the Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti area. This past year's data, there's actually more out-of-community trips happening than in-community, and we have a scaled high, moderate, and low density that's comparable to the data itself. And we look a little bit closer at the ridership within the city of Celine, you see our top destinations of Loom Square, Celine Rec Center, and Bushes, and you see that again congestion around US 12 and other corridors. Tonight, we wanted to look a little bit closer at costs starting January 1st. One model is looking at demand response services Monday through Friday at 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., and that's the current service hours being provided now. At $72 per hour, we're providing a total cost of $187,200, but we're able to reduce that leveraging this local older person service villages that People's Express has been recently awarded, and able to reduce the price by $35,000 there. We're also leveraging state funding to contribute to services at $20,000, and then working with the city manager, we're looking at a 20% reduction for the first six months to really phase up, and that would bring down the cost down to the total to the city of Another model that we wanted to look at, which is similar to Pittsfield Township and their services, being offered Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., that offers more flexibility for those who have needs, work, or medical beyond that traditional nine-to-five. And that cost would be $262,000, but again, leveraging both older adults, villages, state funding, and having a 20% reduction, we're able to look at a cost of $186,372. To dive deeper into community comparisons, we wanted to look at one of our existing cities that we provide services to, the city of South Lion, we have a population of 11,746, and in the last 12 months, People's Express has provided over 10,000 rides, 10,000 rides to the city of South Lion. With that, though, we have some key indicators of offering seven-day-a-week services, with 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. services on the weekdays, and also our driving boundaries across communities, allowing more flexibility in fares and also mobility as well. When we look at that and compare it against the city of Celine's population of 8,948, we're seeing that we could have an estimated demand based on that ratio of 7,759 trips a year. Here, we're kind of indicating that there's a significant likelihood of an unmet demand for Celine residents when it comes to transportation. Another neighbor comparison, Pittsfield Township, again, they provide 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. services Monday through Friday. We're starting, we're actually transitioning from ATA to People's Express January 1st, where we're providing one vehicle to support those demands, and the cost of that township after the markdown is going to be $207,000. More on our service details, so People's Express provides safe, reliable, and affordable transportation for residents. We really wanted, one important is no missed appointments, especially those medical that are for dial assist and chemotherapy. That demand response services we provide, we provide both door-to-door and curb-to-curb options. We allow our booking three days advance for our call center being open 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. All of our vehicles are ADA accessible, and one thing that is unique to us is we provide 37-inch wide lifts with a 1,000-pound capacity, and that allows us to accommodate multi-type of wheelchairs. Our drivers are, receive robust training and background checks, as well as our dispatchers, our professional staff who are able to respond to community needs and really have personalized customer services. Oftentimes, those are on the phone, sometimes those conversations are the only ones are having that day, and we're also able to recognize many other community resources that we can refer them to beyond just the need of transportation. Looking at the fare structure, we wanted to kind of model what we're looking at in Pittsfield Township and other communities within Washtenaw County. The city of Celine, just general public being $2 one-way, and the discounted price being a dollar. The city of Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti being right now at $6 and $3, we are looking to reduce it to four and two. And then those who wanted to travel one township a city away, and our capacity dependent on People's Express would be $6 and $3 one-way, and then that rest of the county with a per-mile pricing at $2.50 per mile and $1.25. With reporting, we want to work with the city to understand more what kind of insights you guys want to look at further. We can provide township total ridership, trip demands by weekdays, Saturdays and Sundays breakdown, if we were to explore weekend services, passenger demographics, those trip purposes, in-community and out-of-community movement, understanding what important places are for access, top destination data for that, as well as trends between the data, and we can look at even visuals of heat mapping to trip points as well as cancellation rates. We do take a closer look at the master plan and how there were several areas that mentioned transportation access and expanding that, allowing those to connect to residents to nearby communities, having safe and efficient and smooth flow for all, as well as the wanting the eager to identify opportunities to expand public transit options, and that brought us back to that option to the contracted service hours. For implementation, we want to work more closely with the city to identify areas of joint communication, including updating the websites, social media platforms, really pushing out so community that this resource is available, having brochures available in the rec center, the senior center, the city hall, even considering infographic mailers, we found success in our other communities with that, and also reaching out to the Celine host and Celine reporter. Outreach is also really important to us, I know this past year they touched a truck that the Celine Area Social Services hosted, and we were very appreciative of us being invited to attend. Forty more relationships with local organizations and connecting with story points in the Celine District Library. Again, we want to talk with more organizations and local businesses and connect with the community further to those orchestrated events. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information. Okay, well, Mr. Lush, I'll start with you again.
Just one question, I don't know if you have the answer for this. I'm looking at that demographic slide, you know, who has been using it. Everything was going up except for the people with disabilities, there was a 4% decrease in both seniors, and is there another service that's come in that is helping more with disabilities now, or?
One thing that could offset that, let me look at the data real quick. One thing that could be offset of that is the decrease in ridership and more attributing to the seniors, which definitely necessarily mean that those might be seeking other services.
Thank you. Mr. Seo?
Several questions, please, thank you. Your ridership data, the same page you're on now, is the 1892, 2025 through October, is that just for the city of Celine, or is that Washtenaw County?
It's just for the city of Celine.
Okay, good, thank you. And then you estimate the cost option one and option two. You show vehicle hours a week is 50, operating eight hours a day, five days a week. How do you come up with 50 hours?
Yeah, so there is a hour, so our drivers do pre-inspections and travel time to get to the city, so there's included those costs as well.
Okay, so the same thing then on the next page's option two. Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. Mr. Girba?
Just a few, when you go back to the actual ridership, it seems that we're down 1,000 riders, you know, according to, through October. They anticipate 1,000 riders. I'm looking at the reasons why we've dropped, and do you have any explanation as to that significant decrease?
I think it's more, like, if I'm looking at the pandemic times, we had vehicle parks at the senior center, we had vouchers that the senior center also offered to residents, which really boosted up ridership. Since the pandemic, we really just have held a steady ground on existing passengers using our services, and I think a lack of awareness of this being a resource has kind of decreased the ridership.
Do we have any additional trend information from '23 and '22 and '20?
We can all, we can put that together and provide like a graph.
Because that would be helpful to understand that. And then the other piece of it is, when I'm looking at some of the information, looking at the destinations in Washtenaw County, I guess in my understanding, we were thinking that more of the trip to ride was thinking, that more of the trips were between the facilities in Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti, and not necessarily there was one trip all the way to Northfield Township. Do we understand what those are or how those occur?
The offshoot ones, it could be because of community events going on, or someone visiting a personal connection, but you are correct, the Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti mostly attributes to work trips, and also people seeking medical facilities. I will say, when you're looking at trip trends, the 2024 year, we had more in-community movements, and this past year, we had more out-of-community movement for the city of Celine, which could indicate people are seeking resources outside of the community. In the appendices, there is an area where you'll see commuter truck time is about 68% have some of your time more than 20 minutes, really indicating people are accessing work outside the community. And then we also look at when women are leaving between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. People's Express, even though it's not forged in our contract to provide services at that time, we do try to do our best when someone calls us and they're in need for us to be able to service those clients, but so that also attributes to the out-of-community traffic. And then I also wanted to point out, when you're looking at Snap retailers, there isn't necessarily affordable grocery stores besides the Walmarts outside of the city, so people are most likely traveling there or other locations to access healthy food.
And when you were looking at the trends regarding the hours distribution, is that information available for Celine to understand what we're seeing?
Yeah, so this is looking at census data that's in the American Community Survey, putting that together and looking at forecasts and trying to do a deeper dive of why the transportation could correlate to your guys' community trends.
Okay, so it's not our specific details or what's happening. One of the things, I'm looking at South Lion, and I see that they have a much greater ridership, but is that more due to probably the commuting, because they have a 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and more people riding it that way?
And I will say, so actually Oakland County, they have a transit-wide village that they passed in 2022. Prior to that, we had a community-based contract with the city itself, and we were providing those like nine-to-five services just as we were in Celine. When we opened up the doors to allow more travel across driving boundaries and reduce fares to be more affordable and even operated during the weekends, we really saw a huge increase in ridership, showing that the demand was there, but maybe the resource wasn't meeting the needs of the people.
So the city of South Lion is receiving subsidies from the Oakland Village?
Correct.
Okay. And then I guess just for me is understanding, it really is that issue of what we're providing and who's using it, and I see your indicators, and just understanding more of how and where people are actually going and what it's using, because that drop for me is a big concern that we're almost 1,000 less than last year, but I mean, we'll have more ridership, but seeing that kind of a 10 to 20% drop, if that's what the final numbers are, seems something's off, so understanding that would be best for us at this point.
Yeah, and one of the things with our current contracts, we offer one vehicle for availability between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. What often happens, though, is if multiple people need to be in the same, different places at the same time, we will try to leverage our vehicles that are available in the nearby areas to be able to support those trips, but People's Express has been expanding, so we haven't done as linear or flexible as we have in years past to be able to leverage other vehicles. Our hope, though, is with the older adults village and more community transportation across the Washtenaw County area, would allow for more efficiency and cost savings that we could be more connected as communities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Ms. Hamra?
So it looks like it's, if my math is correct, it looks like it's about $70 per trip if we're looking at this 2,888.
Yes.
So that's pretty stout, and most of it within, you know, like the area. So if the increase of rider, if the ridership increases, would that offset the city's part of it of 186,000?
So the cost is to operate a vehicle, so whether the ridership is increasing or decreasing, it would not change the pricing model. One of the things I know, like, the heavy costs and people have the argument of like, why not Uber or Lyft? But with our services, we're providing drivers who have de-escalation training, they have first aid and CPR, there are professional drivers who go through background checks and safety sensitivity, they have wheelchair security, that a lot of privatized companies do not offer wheelchair ADA compliance support, so that all adds up in costs, and that's unfortunately why transportation's often subsidized.
Great. Are there also an increase, so there's a reduction in use, so there was a decrease, and the question has been why, like, what's the cause of that? But are there cancellation increases? Have we seen an increase?
We can look at the cancellation, because that's one thing we can look at a little bit further.
And I'd like to piggyback another question off of that, is what are folks have, is their complaint, like, is there something that people are not happy with in the service, and what are some things that the people are complaining about?
I think the biggest thing, so we actually have a mobility manager that if we can't, we don't like telling people now, especially if they're going through hardships, the last thing when they pick up the phone is saying, here's the answer now. So our mobility manager will try to connect them to other resources, so they fall outside the boundaries of what the city offers. Looking at being said, that's probably the biggest issue is them not meeting their needs of where they need to go, whether it's my insurance is taking me outside of the county for my specialized doctor's appointment, or I want to get to the airport, so things that are outside the bounds of the city is one of those more common feedback we receive.
Okay, and then what about the increase, were there an increase in cancellations?
I don't have the data on hand, but we can provide that back to the council, I can provide it to the city manager, who's going to contribute it.
Okay, thanks for your information.
What's up, Ms. Hamra? Thank you. I've got a couple of similar questions that I was just going to kind of try to roll through very quickly, which is, for a while, we had two buses, we had an in-town loop and then we had an external loop, because what we were finding was the bus was leaving town and there was no service in town. So I guess, first of all, I'm not sure what happened to the second vehicle. If our contract hadn't changed, do we know, like, why we're down to one bus?
That might have been from, I'm not quite sure historically, because it's 2018, I was unfortunately there during that time, but what I can say is, we probably had it informally outside the existing contract, we were providing a secondary vehicle. What we are able to still do informally, though, is we do leverage other vehicles in our neighboring communities. That way, we can still have a sling bus in the sling area for those who need trips to Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti, especially with the Pittsfield Township contract starting. For those who also might need to be going to Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti, we can kind of run a route between the two communities to bring them outside.
Okay. And then, do you find that your vehicles are one passenger or are they multi-passenger? Like, is it like a bus where it's picking up people and then?
It depends on our scheduling system and where they're going. Sometimes we do double load or triple load. Sometimes it depends of whether they have an oversized wheelchair and how many we can fit. So it fluctuates between one to four passengers.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm hoping that we can find the balance and find the right mix, because transportation has always been an issue in our community as we don't have access to normal public transit. So providing private-public transit, I think, is crucial for us, and especially those that are able to accommodate wheelchairs or other mobility devices is very important. Understanding how it's being used and that it's being used by City of Seleni residents and whether it's, because when I start looking at some of these, I'm trying to figure out if they're inbound or outbound, outbound, some of these locations.
All the data we provided are residents. I think in the packets, were the data ship package distributed to city council?
This is presentation.
Just this presentation, okay. So there is another packet that shows actually data of communities outside of the city of Seleni that are going into the city of Seleni, is factored into some table of ours, and then another one is strictly the city of Seleni residents. So the data here tonight is just residents.
Okay.
And the driving boundaries is to establish where those residents can go while they're maintaining a flat fare.
Understand. Thank you very much for that. And city manager Swallow, do you have an idea as to what our current pricing structure looks like?
This will be a significant increase, because we haven't had an increase since 2021, so I recall.
2018, I think it was, was the last time our contract.
And I appreciate that. I think that we're going to need to have some further conversations and work through some details. We are not taking action on this item this evening. Thank you, this was very informative, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you so much. And if there's any lingering thoughts or comments, we're more than happy, we have some tonight that will come back with you guys with more information on.
Thank you again very much. We're going to wait till they clear some monitors and then we can start to move on. So moving on now to the consent agenda. The following items will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Are there any items to be removed at this time?
To approve the consent agenda as submitted.
In a second.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. With that, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion will carry. Moving on now to new business. Item number 25-179, water and sewer rate resolution. It's going to be a motion to acknowledge receipt of resolution 25-179 and to approve or not approve the resolution establishing water and sewer rates effective January 1, 2026.
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, Mr. Gerba, is there a second to that? Thank you, Ms. Hamer. Treasurer Finch, did you want to take the lead, city manager?
I'll take the lead.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor and council. It is that time of year where we take a look at not only water and sewer rates, but all our P's, and obviously that's a figure in the agenda, we took on some of the other P's as well. But for water and sewer rates, there's obviously three primary components of that, we take a look at operation maintenance costs, so those ongoing costs over year to year that include labor, include regular maintenance, include regular contractual items, obligations for operating supplies, electrical power, treatment, chemicals, meter costs, repair costs, and other maintenance activities. So those are the first consideration we take a look at, and those have been increasing and generally see in the reports about 5% to 6% annually. The second component, of course, is our long-term debt service. This is significant, particularly because of our wastewater treatment project, but there also are preceding debt prior to that. There's a whole debt schedule that was included in the rate study by Bezinski and Associates that you can take a closer look at. And then finally, component, looking forward as to what additional capital improvements that we may need to make in the next several years. So taking that into account, we did conduct a rate study last year in 2024 that was attached with the agenda packet this evening. And combining those, it takes a look at what should the rates be going forward and how do we, how do we determine that based on those three primary components? The recommendation from Bezinski Associates is to, for our water rates, that we increase those 6.5% and for our sewer rates, that we increase those 7.5%. And that is to keep up with, again, maintenance costs, long-term debt, as well as future capital planning. To take a look, what does that mean for a typical resident? If you look at the increase in water commodity charge, and there's two components to the rates, there's a commodity charge, which is for the, what people use on a per-thousand-gallons basis. There's also a fixed charge or a readiness-to-serve charge that's established on a quarterly basis. And that's to, even if there's not water flowing or sewer flowing to residents, there's still costs associated with maintaining the system. So the recommendation for, on the water side, is to go on the commodity usage or per-thousand-gallons, is to go from $5.59 per thousand gallons to $5.95 per thousand gallons. For the wastewater or the sewer side, the recommendation is to go from $14.92 per thousand gallons to $16.04 per thousand gallons. Associated with that, you have the readiness-to-serve charges, those also increase on the water side, $30.13 per quarter to $32.08 per quarter. And on the sewer side, $56.69 per quarter to $60.94 per quarter. So what does that mean for a typical resident? So with that, that would be about, if you assume a 6,000 gallons per month usage, and that's actually fairly high relative, a lot of our users are under that. But, you know, thinking conservatively and what that would mean to a user, be about $10.95 per month increase for a typical user, or $32.85 per quarter. So that is a recommendation, and we realize that nobody likes to increase water and sewer rates. But without an increase, as we discussed at the, our audit, we will have difficulty meeting all of our financial obligations from an operation main standpoint, as well as from a debt service standpoint. So as an overview, we can dive into the rate studies and/or take any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lesh, I'm going to start with you again.
As you said, nobody likes to raise rates, but we have seen the cost of everything increasing. I mean, you can't buy a box of chocolates for less than 7% increase anymore, so it's something that we knew was going to come, and we knew we'd have to eventually deal with the debt service for the city. And I think keeping it this level is probably the best we can do, so.
Thank you. Mr. Seo.
Yeah, I think these are basic commodities that people expect, and along with that expectation ought to come the expectation that eventually you have to pay for it. So I guess I'm concert with the recommendations and I'm willing to vote to approve them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gerba.
I know we have these concerns, and we have addressed these issues about attainable housing and cost of living in Seleni and what we need to do. I have voted for these increases for the last 20 years because we needed to do it and it's required to do it. What I look at this is that when we look at the value of our water, just producing water and to clean it, when you just look at the commodity cost itself, it's 22 cents per gallon. What else can you do for 22 cents? I mean, you look at milk, $3 a gallon, or you look at pop, or you look at alcohol. For us to have the most clean water and to provide that type of thing, we need to provide the proper equipment and we need to accommodate for that. That price is good. Yes, we have a right to serve charge, but that distributes across thousands of gallons that you use. And so when you really get down to it, our cost of water, yes, it seems like it's expensive, but when it's the reality of what you're using and what we can do and what we need to do in this community, this is the cost to provide the services, to provide this commodity, and to build a system to which we can not only produce the water, but to use the water. What I'm concerned is when I look at the rate studies, the water study seems fine. I've seen our cash flow increase, and we have maybe a deficit every year or so, but it seems manageable within $10,000. And that can be addressed either through increased users or water. Where we get the concern is we're reliable and liable due to one heavy user in the community, which is American soy. So for us to address our issues and concerns with water isn't so much, much about production, it's about users and growth and addressing that issue. I look at the studies, and the studies for me don't account for potential growth that's going to happen. We're taking a very conservative approach to it, so that is a good way to look at it. Hopefully, when we move forward, some of these increases could be less. But when we look at our sewer analysis, that one has to be very worried. When we start going out into the out-years, we're talking deficits of nearly $1 million and don't know what's going to mean in four to five years from now. I need to see projections that take us out past '28. I know they're speculative, but we don't understand what that's going to mean. And so at this point, doing a 7.5% increase is needed. I'm concerned that it should be higher. I made this exact concern a year ago when I looked at those cash flows and that $1 million concern. And that's why, at that time, I had requested $1 million be set aside in the general fund for a potential loan to the utility fund, that we do not miss that first payment. Looking at it, it seems that we're going to have cash sufficient unless something significant happens or we don't have the water usage or the sewer rates that we have currently. But if we don't do these increases, we will have a problem. And I think, Mr. Swallow, and as former deputy manager Cole had stated, and how we have said in the past, these sewer increases have to happen. I look at the numbers, I feel confident that we're looking at these. My biggest concern is that we do not know what could happen with commodity costs and supplies and things that we're having going forward. In addition, addressing how we will handle growth in the next three to four years related to other necessities that we have to fix in our system. So without these increases, we cannot achieve what our public wants and how we can achieve it, and we have to do it through utility rates, it's the only way we can do it. So this may be a long speech, but I feel that we set, we set this on a track five years ago to bring this forward and start going on it. I'm disappointed other individuals did not support this, did not vote for it because they didn't want to make a stance to show that they wanted to support this type of development and this type of infrastructure for our community. Moving forward, voting for this is the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Gerba. Ms. Hamer.
I feel like that speech was for me, because I'm having a really hard time with this. It's like assets not being managed, now we have to pay the piper situation. So the water rates, yeah, we're totally in line to have an increase, and I don't dispute that, and I think that it's definitely reasonable. Also, it's in line with the other communities around us. I really have a hard time with the sewer. Our sewer rate per, you know, is going to go up to $16.04, and that will put us, you know, Ann Arbor's at $8.99, Pittsfield Township's $7.58, I mean, we're, all the other communities are significantly lower. And so, you know, it's almost like a multiplying effect, every gallon of water that you use, it's a multiplying effect with the impact on the sewer, and our sewer rates are super high. And we're talking about affordability in the housing, it's really, it's unfortunately not fair to the folks that are, you know, moving in now and now having to pay these increases of the, you know, 7.5%. And so I personally am being stuck in a position where I'm not, I don't want to see rate increases, you know, that are 7.5% year-over-year and maybe more than that. And I'm not really sure what the plan is to help mitigate that. So I'm not really sure where, you know, we're going to have to, so.
Take a close look, if I may. One of the things that I think is important, if you take a look at the rate study, there's a table that talks about the schedule of cash reserves. And so we're going to be able to build a little bit, happen over the last few years with the, with the, with the rate increases. However, our debt peaks in next fiscal year. So fiscal year '28 is when our debt peaks, and that's about $4 million a year in terms of debt service for the sewer side. And so I think that unfortunately is what we're seeing, and that it is to, in large part, you know, pay for the capital improvements that are being made. And yes, you could argue that, could you spread those out over time a little bit more? But when you rebuild the entire, almost the entire wastewater plant, that's, so the issue's very facing.
I guess I would like to make one request. I know that in our bill, we're charged to the 1,000, you know, 1,000 gallons. Since our water meters have an ability to read more exact information than that, I think that I would like to, you know, on the record, request that we look into what that would entail.
I have talked to the treasurer's office about that, based on previous question. We do round down, and so in terms of the, and they've verified this with the billing system, so you don't get charged for that next 1,000 until you reach that full 1,000 gallons.
Right, but then it would roll into the next period, and if there was a rate increase, then that would, the person would be charged for the previous period at a new rate.
So one of the challenges we do face is it would require reprogramming the meters and how they, how they report into the billing system. So it is a significant challenge to go down to that next level, say 100 gallons, but we will continue to look at that.
Anything further? Thank you. I've got a couple of quick questions that I'd like to add to the conversation. I appreciate the memo and getting back into the rate study. Will there be another rate study being done? Did you mention that, Mr. Swallow?
We're looking at just updating existing rate study to do a less significant overall, but just to make sure that we're still in line and also make sure that we fully understand all of our debt services, the other, the other item, we want to make sure that it's all covered. So it would be just an update to the existing study.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because one of the things, there's a reoccurring theme when you start to, and it's just sort of, just basic contract language, I think, from the consultant that created this document, which is that they're basing their information on the information in which we're giving them. We've had changes in leadership, and so I want to make sure that our current position still aligns with the information which was previously given to them. I think there were some assumptions made about growth and just understanding if we're still on track. And I would like to sort of see a number in which, you know, if there's a threshold that we have to have X amount of users come online per year to keep on track, to make sure that our numbers are matching up the way they're supposed to. So I would hope that we could get something like that from it. I do, I would be remiss if I did not mention that, the comment that had come through from public comment regarding water quality. I mean, we are still struggling with that, and I think that needs to be a top priority for the city moving forward. I think we've made some, some headway with it. Our flushing processes are helping, but there are still significant people in this community that are dealing with brown water, definitely not as frequently, but the expectation is that we will not have that. So I'm hoping that we will continue to make forward motion on resolving that issue as we move forward. I will say that, in line with what Mr. Gerba had mentioned, when you start looking out, it's frightening to see that we are going to sort of turn upside down at one point a bit. And so understanding, are the rates actually high enough? And I know that's, it's not what people want to hear, is just sort of understanding, though, but I don't want to be in a position where the next generation of people that are sitting here are looking and saying, well, why was this not done? here are looking and saying, well, why was this not done? And so I think having that information in front of us so that we're making the best decisions for today and tomorrow is absolutely imperative at this point.
I think there was an effort to kind of smooth the rates.
Yes, I think for years, there was an effort to smooth, and we oversmooth. And so.
Based on information we provided. So we didn't have that clarity that I think we have now, that that doesn't work.
Building up a little bit of cash reserves accommodates for those future years where there is negative cash flow.
Yes. And just for clarification, I think at a previous meeting quite some time ago, I think there was a motion made by, or at least something brought forward by Mr. Gerba about earmarking $1 million from fund balance. Has that been done? I remember I was having robust conversations about it. Wasn't, I guess, just understanding if that action was taken.
The short answer is that, generally speaking, you do not want to utilize general fund dollars for, you know, water and sewer enterprise fund support. However, there is obviously significant fund balance in the general fund for a potential loan or something.
Right, and I think that's what it was. It was definitely meant to be a loan, not a funding source.
There are other, we'll take a look at that as we take a look at the designated fund balance as to exactly what we want to do with that. There are other items in there, for example legislative changes and things that could be reallocated to a reserve fund for any potential shortfall.
Thank you. Mr. Gerba?
If I may, there may be other expenses that we attribute to infiltration and such that, stormwater and things like that, that potentially, maybe those costs could be handled related to some of those issues in the future. So we could look at that, too. Because I know we're trying to put all these costs into the sewer system and everything, but some of those activities may need to be handled through general fund activities just because of redevelopment streets and as we do that work for that type of thing. So hopefully, we can achieve some of those.
There will be stormwater work, and if there's a crossover to prevent I and I or infiltration inflow, that could be covered under general fund dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the dais? Okay, so we just need a motion to acknowledge. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're looking for a motion to approve or not approve the water and sewer resolution.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Lesh. Thank you, Mr. Seo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Continuing on, we are moving to item number 25-182, the 2026 Fee Book Update. And this is going to be a motion to acknowledge receipt and adopt or not adopt the calendar year 2026 fee book as amended with the proposed changes to become effective January 1, 2026.
Need to acknowledge and adopt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lesh and Mr. Seo. Is there any discussion? Mr. Gerba?
Just to highlight, I know the majority of these fees are associated with the REC Center, and I know you're making a recommendation based on some analysis that was done. Again, I feel that the rates that we charge and not providing for an increase that's significant, again, doesn't address the cost of inflation or the significant increases that are costing at the REC Center. So there's a problem there. We can bang the hell out of the fees, but we know that it's still going to be a shortfall. And my biggest concern, though, is we provide incentives to encourage people to renew at an old rate, and we lose out on the advantage of the increase, not only from perspective of the increased revenue, but because you're delaying it and not addressing the inflation that could have happened and can be offset by that increase. I think we need to reassess how we do incentives to renew people. If we have to do those kinds of discounts in order to get people to renew, it just reassures and reforms, there's a significant issue with generating revenue for this facility. But I will be approving these rate increases because they're needed.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on the motion moved by Lesh, seconded by Seo, to acknowledge and to adopt the calendar year 2026 fee book as amended with the proposed changes to become effective January 1, 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Continuing on, item number 25-183, Clear Flow Asset Management. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve or not approve the acquisition of a computerized maintenance management system program for the water and wastewater plants' vertical assets with an initial cost of $29,135. This cost will include initial purchase and setup of the program at $15,895 and the first year maintenance cost of $13,240.
Move to acknowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Gerba. Okay. Not as fast as Brad was writing stuff down. Since you move to acknowledge, Mr. Gerba, would you so like to start the conversation?
Thank you. Mr. Swallow, if you could give a little oversight of what this means, and you've had, we've had discussions, I've asked my questions. One of the things I'm having right now is that we're going to have a transition for our DPW Director, and he made this recommendation, I believe. But it's going to happen in our wastewater and our water plant. Can you describe to us how this would be implemented? I mean, we only have, we have a year test on this, as I read the documentation, whatever, and we could cancel it. But how do you see this being implemented? Who's going to be responsible for it? And really, does this provide the kind of support considering this is a fairly new startup company?
Thank you, Councilman. So with that, this is something we've taken a close look at. We do have a current asset management system, basically Asset Essentials, that has been used primarily for the water sewer distribution and collection system. What they found is they use those, it does not work very well for the vertical assets. There's some shortfalls in how the data is collected. And so we did start looking for a new system for the water and wastewater plants specifically. And while the DPW Director was involved in evaluating this company, Superintendent Briggs is here tonight, obviously, was also very much involved in evaluating the company and what would be usable for them, specifically at the water and wastewater plant. And so with that, this system was specifically designed, and there's different components to it, but for the vertical assets or the built-up assets rather than your horizontal assets, like your pipes in the ground. So this was customized for that. Even though the company is relatively new, they did go through six years of development. It has been adopted by the City of Grand Rapids as a customer, so they do have a growing customer base within the state of Michigan. And this is, the other reason we take a look at that, take a look at this program, is its ease of implementation. And it is designed to be very user-friendly, very graphic-oriented. They have actual QR codes that will be on each piece of the equipment. The company will actually implement in terms of entering all the data into the original base, database, and then as we get users, they can literally scan the piece of equipment, know what previous work was done. I have some details on the equipment itself. So ease of implementation is part of that. Training is included in this initial startup, as far as training specific staff that will be responsible for maintaining the database. And it is also, it will be integrated into our GIS system, so we have been using some of the, you know, some of the similar components to this. And so we do have people that are already familiar with GIS system that are on city staff that have been utilizing that, so I think that's helpful as well. So ultimately, as we invest, you know, as we just talked about, significant resources in our wastewater plant in particular, but also looking at scanning and updating, we talked about maintenance, you know, water quality concerns, making sure that certain maintenance is done on filters, et cetera, on the RO system versus us, mostly system of water. I do think this is an appropriate investment, and talking with Superintendent Briggs, you know, obviously, we will lose Mr. Avila. He's comfortable that his staff will be able to implement this.
And just a couple of questions I have. I was reading through the contract, and it talks about, we're going to get bronze support, but there's other levels of support in which it says enhanced support, whatever. And then there's like only a half an hour a month for some type of specific support, and then it's $200 an hour if you add a new component or do something like that. Do you anticipate that being a concern or an issue, that we would have more needs for support since this is a startup? Or do we feel that there's enough, I guess, expertise that's going to be done? Because one week of training and then having all the follow-up and knowing everything that's coming online with our new plant, I'm just a bit concerned that there may be a lot of backend requirements needed in order to make sure that everything works. When are we actually implementing this, considering, is everything in our inventory? Because that was a concern with the administrative consent order, that some of that maintenance and stuff haven't happened. These may be questions that I'm just putting out there. The other thing that I looked at was, appears that the devices or whatever that are placed on the equipment and everything are proprietary and that they belong to the company. And should we decide to terminate after a year? How much effort do we place into everything and who's doing all this effort? So there are a number of things that I looked at this, just trying to understand, that we've always had difficulty with implementations, and we look at new software. How much work is going to be placed upon our own staff to assist with this? Or is all that information available in the databases? Because it kind of looked like they were asking just for a dump of data into that, and I'm trying to understand how much of our existing equipment is already in a data set, all ready to go? Or do we need to have something coming from our, you know, construction companies or that kind of stuff?
Definitely have a significant amount of information coming new online with the new plant, and so a lot of that will come from design engineers or what components are there and what, adding to that. So obviously, the training and setup is on them to begin with. It is, as you mentioned, you know, just a few weeks of training and setup for that, but there's six weeks, if you look at remote staff training, you can go live and ongoing support services. So I think there's, you know, total time there is more than a week in terms of setup. With that, ultimately, though, it will rely a lot on us maintaining it and entering the work orders. City staff do a lot of that work, so I guess they don't know. For sure, exactly what we may rely on, but there is that support service that is included, and there may be some expense to go above and beyond that.
And that's the piece where I keep reiterating, I think, just to wrap it back up, is it's this implementation, preparing the information before it gets into the system so that we're not backtracking, trying to fix things. And the other concern is, when does the service date start on that one year? Is it when we just start putting information into it? Or is it a year after we're full online with the new wastewater treatment plant, and it starts at that point? I'm assuming you're going to start doing this immediately and that the one year.
When we started the water plant.
Water plant, okay.
So that we'd have a lead-up time until we'd be ready for the wastewater plant to start bringing that online.
So the whole test will be on the water plant and then implemented later? Okay. Again, when I look at this, it seems like, as you mentioned earlier, we're like their fifth client, and as you start adding more and more clients, attention starts getting spread thick, and if they don't add enough additional support, we may have a concern. So if you feel comfortable with what we've designed in this contract and we'll account for that, I don't want to have Bill, Bill, I don't want you struggling, or Craig, or Ben, a year from now and not having the ability to get what you need to come out of the software. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. So we talked about this in the asset, I'm sorry, in the agenda setting meeting, about this. This is not a redundant, right, to GIS. This is, there are not redundant services that the GIS currently has, right? This is a separate.
It can be built on top of the GIS system, so it is valuable that we already have an existing GIS system ready to go. And so adding to that and really utilizing this for more asset management and tracking maintenance is the key.
Right, and more vertical assets. So we're using the GIS right now for the horizontal assets. So what happens if we cancel the services? What happens with the information? Do they just take everything? Or what happens with the, what happens with what we've already paid for? Do we get to keep, you know?
We own the data, but there'll be no more updates, and obviously, there'd be no more utilization of the actual ongoing software updates.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to ask a couple of questions on this one, because this one sort of got me a little bit. Do we have the number of assets that we are going to, even at one, like just at the water plant, like the actual number of assets that are going to get tagged? And then I guess the flip side to that is, how long is it going to take to tag those, inventory those, and then populate the information? And I guess, I know we've been having this conversation, but I guess I'm just trying to understand, because the one thing that I don't understand with this company is it talks about, you know, this astronomical, like 2,000% return on investment within months, which, when you start looking at that, you know, they're calculating it at like $1.8 And trying to understand, you know, oh, you're going to be saving all this time with, you know, eliminating paper and things like that. I mean, they're still going to need data entry, whether it's on paper, whether it's into a tablet. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, like, where this whole $2.2 million that they're projecting that we're going to save by implementing this is coming from.
I think that's an exaggeration, I'll be honest, in terms of, you know, in terms of, they look at it as the key, not only in labor and entering it, but also in, you know, protecting your asset and replacing it on a regular schedule and maintaining the asset so it doesn't fail at some point in time. So that's, that's the bigger savings, is actually, you know, the equipment that you prevent, you do all those preventive maintenance to prevent, you know, a potential failure on those. So that's probably the biggest savings as part of that. The smaller savings is in labor and understanding exactly and producing those work orders so that you know what you're doing throughout the entire day. So I guess I would, you know, submit somewhat to, Superintendent Briggs, if you have any comment on, you know, kind of the number of assets. I know that we've, we've started to build that as far as knowing the plans at the water plant and the wastewater plant, but there is a maximum number as part of this, but we'll continue to build over time.
So initially, we have, I want to say about 230 pieces of equipment that, that Zoye Genwer came in and mixed it for us. And we use that information, sent that to these guys. And so there, they basically have that set up, started in their program. They have to tag everything, obviously, and link it. But, so, the amount that we're, I think, when you talk about savings, I think, Senior Manager Swallow's, there's a lot of it's going to be, how much we're going to save on maintaining the equipment, making sure that it's raised properly. So you don't have to, if you remember, last year and a half, two years, we did a lot of work at the water plant. We had, I service pumps we had to fix because they were, you know, pretty much junk. And so if we maintain that stuff, take it out of service and put any maintenance on it, we'll save a lot of money along with that type of thing. As far as the wastewater side goes in, one of the reasons we're the really, not just myself, but Craig and then the other guys, was the fact that we can actually use this information. The Asset Essentials, they're designed for horizontal assets. Not working all well for us. We can't get, it's very difficult to get a, just a work order printed out. And it has to be printed out, and it has to be entered back in. And you can't archive it, it's always there. So for that piece of equipment, you can go through all the work orders, find them if you want. And it's, they actually came down to the water plant and previewed it with some of Grand Rapids information to show us how it worked. And a new piece of equipment, it took about five minutes, scan a QR code, tell it what it was, and it was in there. Now, again, you have to put in, you know, your maintenance intervals. And, but you also, you can also link manuals, actual manuals to this. Pull a manual up on your iPad or whatever, so that you can have that information right there, and it'll tell you what you need to do. So we're, you know, we're, yes, they're young, but these guys came out of this, this part of the industry, water and wastewater, realizing that this wasn't out there, and that's why they're doing it. And I think there's some others that are trying to. These guys are local from Michigan. That's an upside. I think it's an upside that we have a one-year limit on it, because right now with Asset Essentials, there is no way in the contract to get rid of the fee anymore. So if this works like we think it will in the next year. So if this, if this works like we think it will in the next year, I'm looking way, way ahead of where we are right now. As far as wastewater stuff goes, we've got, we don't have that many pieces of equipment, new equipment going online yet? We have a few. But Craig's been keeping a spreadsheet of all that stuff. It's supposed to be a lot easier to integrate into this instead of going back and saying, okay, what we got? It's actually going to be more difficult to go back, the older equipment that we're keeping to put that in.
Fantastic, well, I appreciate that. So the only other, I've got a couple, just sort of trying to read through this contract and just sort of learning some lessons from, from our past experiences. So this is completely cloud-based, correct?
Correct.
So is there any issue with cybersecurity? And does anyone else have access to this? And could it be detrimental to our water supply or anything like that?
This is all just-
It's just maintenance data. There's nothing that controls any of those mechanisms.
They don't roll during time to it.
Fantastic.
It's all just-
Okay. And then the other thing is, if we decide this isn't the right fit for us, is just sort of understanding the, the early termination clause in here I wasn't sure about. And it says that to provide flexibility and ensure success, the customer may terminate this agreement without cause after the first year by providing at least 60 days written notice. So, which means that we're committed to at least a full year to this.
And I think that taking a full year just to evaluate, you know, is it functioning properly?
Right.
They wanted a five-year contract.
Okay.
And I was like, well, do you want to spend five out of five years worth of money upfront? Or do you want to squeeze into it more? It was my suggestion to do some type of out plot, if it wasn't going to work for us.
Okay. And then the other thing, and I think that Councilmember Harmout asked about it earlier, just for clarification. We own the data. It doesn't matter whether or not they commentate the QR tags off of the equipment. That data we will still have access to?
Right, we may have to get it downloaded, you know, from the cloud base, but yes, we will still-
But we would still have, it would, it would be usable-
You're not going to take the QR codes up? We buy the QR, QR codes from them.
Right.
And we use them to link the equipment. So the QR codes we pay for upfront.
Okay. My only question would be, I would love to have this come back to us after about six months and sort of see what it looks like in process. And if it's a good fit, then we know to kind of, you know, go full steam ahead on it. If it's not, maybe there's an opportunity to tweak things on the product side. But also understanding that if it's not the right fit, that we cut our losses and start looking for something that will be. Like you had said with asset essentials, you were very quick to realize it was not the right product for your needs. And so this sounds good and just whether or not it's going to work for our size community, our type of equipment, whatever the case may be.
Just one more thing I think, partly because they are an open company and they really want to get their product out there. I'm pretty sure in this first year we'll have really good, I want to say, communication.
Support, yeah, customer support.
They want us to succeed, so they can succeed.
I appreciate that. Anything else on this? Okay, then I think we are ready to vote. Right now, we currently just have a motion to acknowledge that was moved by Gearba, seconded by Harmout. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're looking for a motion to approve or not approve the acquisition, acquisition, excuse me, of a computerized maintenance management system.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that with the recommendation that we have a review of this six months in July of 2026.
Ms. Harmout, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so July of 2026. Clerk Royal, do I need to kind of figure something out? Or can you work your magic down there as to what the motion-
I have the regular motion with the recommendation of a review in six months or July of 2026.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to our last action item, which is item 25-184, the Carlisle-Wortman Associates, Inc. Rental Housing Certification Services Contract Renewal. We are looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve or not approve the Carlisle-Wortman and Associates Rental Inspection Services Contract Renewal for January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2028.
Acknowledge and approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Seo, Mr. Lesh. Any discussion? We made Mr. Rosnick sit here this whole time. I think he's got to come up and present to us.
Good evening, everyone. I give you copies of a very brief-
Oops. I think we need our tech to work his magic. Nope. It's on the thumb drive? Yep.
We've got a copy of this on a group. It's just a brief overview. We're at state, so we started this program, the ordinance got adopted, I think, close to three years ago. We didn't start intaking registrations and processing things, getting the ball rolling, till February of 2023. So it's been about two and a half years. We held a town hall meeting in early February of that year, if you recall, for landlords. This room was quite packed. It was a very robust discussion. And we began receiving applications for registrations within about three weeks after the town hall meeting. And then we began scheduling inspections and started inspecting in mid-March and issued the first certifications in early April. So the certifications that were issued in the first six months after that start time are now in the renewal process because they're into their next cycle. The next date shows you as a reminder that when we pitched this program to this body, we thought pretty confidently that we would be able to operate the program within the incoming revenue. And that has turned out to be the chase. It was quite close, but we did come in under the revenue projections. According to the BSA data, for all of the incoming revenue from the city's own database, about 100, just under $188,000 in the last two and a half years. That would be fees for registrations and inspections and some ancillary things. Your contract expenses, and this is based off of our actual invoices to the city for that same time period, was just under $163. There's a separate line item in our invoicing system for anything that occurs related to the program outside of processing registrations and inspections and enforcement. Mostly meetings with, with some of the larger landlords and a lot of court expenses. District court for some of the smaller landlords and of course, the circuit court case that this council approved for Thorncrest Apartments, that is still in progress. But I'm happy to report, Chris would expound on it perhaps, that your attorney is getting ready to file an amended stipulated order, putting the new ownership under the same circuit court order with a new timeline. And we're hoping, when we talk about this a year from now, it will be 100% compliant, compliant, that's the goal. So when you mixed in the $14,000 that was invoiced to the city for court and other ancillary things, the expenses came in just under $11,000 less than the revenue. And that helps account for some of the city's overhead, BSA costs and so forth. I'm very pleased to report, when we did the two and a half year look back, as you recall, the ordinance was set up to give landlords an incentive to perform well and get an extra third year at no additional cost. For single-family homes and the two-family duplex homes that are rented out in the city, just under half of all those landlords performed to those expectations, got the three-year certificate. And surprisingly, for the multifamily apartment communities, it was 85% so far. The big player in that piece of data was Six Trails Apartments. We went in early, before the actual inspections began. We did walkthroughs with their management and their maintenance staff to help prepare them. And this, they were under new management at that time. These people had just recently taken over when they walked into this along with us. And they performed extraordinarily well. So Six Trails has been 100% certified for quite a long time. And I think that's a really good thing to see. All of that, yeah. Just some quick numbers. 141 single-family homes in the city registered as rentals and they've all been inspected and certified. 34 of those are in the renewal process. Now, two-family duplex homes that are rented, we've registered and certified 39 of those duplex homes, total of 75 dwelling units. You'll notice, if you double 39 because it's duplex, it doesn't come out to 75. And that's because a handful of those were owner occupied in one half of the duplex. So they didn't get inspected. And several of those are in the renewal process now. The multifamily units, 75 buildings containing 650 apartments. 51 of those buildings and just under 500 of those apartment units have been certified and there's quite a few still pending, the majority of which was Thorncrest Apartments. The next page breaks that down for you. So you'll see who the long holdouts have been. Thorncrest has 15 buildings and 120 units. Currently under circuit court consent agreement and under new ownership for about the last month or so. There's a nine-unit building at 103 West Russell that is currently in district court and their certification has been suspended for a good cause. And we're working with the landlord to correct all those things. And then there's three small, three-unit multifamily properties that are also still trying to achieve certification. Millpon Manor, as of today, we have not yet touched Millpon Manor. We decided to tackle Thorncrest first as the number one task from the building department in terms of property maintenance complaints. And we serviced everyone else that voluntarily registered and complied with the ordinance. We have been talking with Millpon Manor. We've done, our inspector's gone out there and done walkthroughs with them to help prepare them as well. We pulled the 47 apartment units. They will be inspected sometime next year, early next year, and we'll bring them into compliance. And then some quick inspection data, as you can see, the numbers speak for themselves. About 78% of all the inspections that were originally scheduled were actually conducted and performed. And we had over 700 cancellations. A lot of that was Six Trails canceling on us the day of, when we were planning to be there all day. And that accounted for a big part of this. But a lot of the other ones were just people that called and canceled at the last minute. And I will mention too, that our staff, when that happens, we try to ask them for more information. What's going on, why are you continuing later? If it's some emergency, some life event that was out of the landlord's control, we waive the fees. We don't bill the city for that. And then finally, there's enforcement data. Above and beyond the actual inspections of the units, when we run into cases, some of the hard cases where they just won't comply, we open up enforcements and those records are in your BSA system as well, under enforcements rather than certificates. And we opened 61 of those cases since we started this program. Half of them, little over half, were for unregistered rentals that we discovered that the landlords just would not comply. So we ticketed five of them and they eventually did comply. Quick, interesting story, and I won't use addresses or names, but there was a father-son duo that owned five rental properties in the city. And they registered, they got inspected, they got certified with very little problems originally. It came up recently for renewal. And they decided to transfer the properties into a trust and said, we're sovereign citizens. We don't recognize the city's authority and we're not going to do this again. So we went to district court. The case, the city won the case in district court. And earlier this week, they, or I'm sorry, just before Thanksgiving last week, Monday, the son came in and essentially apologized and registered and said, let's, let's go. We made a mistake. So that's good news. That's an update on the actual program and the status of it. I'm personally quite pleased with how it's gone. I think it's gone as expected and as designed. And with your approval, we're looking forward to continuing on for the next three years. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the contract agreements.
Thank you very much. Questions from the DAS? Okay, Mr. Gearba.
Just give us an idea of how landlords have been responding to it. What have been some of the most common concerns and issues in the rental department that haven't been significant or, you know, kind of the things that people need to just look out for in terms of, you know, violations or whatever, yeah.
Smoke detectors has been number, or not, I wouldn't say number one, but it's top five.
And we used to have an ordinance for that, or we do have an ordinance for that, don't we?
Smoke functional-
Smoke detectors, whether, depending on when the building was put up, if they're hardwired in or if they're battery operated. So anything in the last 15 years, I think, is required to be hardwired. Otherwise, a battery power, but just make sure that they're operational. That's, that's been a big one.
Since 2018, the property maintenance code, the 18 edition, required carbon monoxide detectors in any residential structure that had a fuel-fired appliance, propane or gas, or had an automobile garage with a pedestrian passageway into the living quarters, like an attached garage. The city didn't, you weren't able to enforce that until you adopted the 2021 code, which got adopted at the same time the rental ordinance got adopted. So we've had to give tutorials on the importance of carbon monoxide detectors and where and when that they're required. As Chris said, the smoke alarms is huge. I can't, I couldn't begin to count the number of rental units that now have operable smoke alarms that didn't before. And that, that's really important. We have found in some of the single-family homes, we found some pumps that were connected to the sanitary sewer system and we require them to disconnect and reroute it to a suitable, approvable location. So that's another plus. I've heard you're talking a lot about your wastewater system, so that, as tiny as that data is, it's helpful. Really can't think of anything else other than landlords are now crystal clear on when they're required to pull a building permit. Because we, furnaces and water heaters are the two big ones, mostly water heaters. When the inspector goes in, when they do the inspection, you have the luxury of your housing inspector through us also as a licensed mechanical inspector. He doesn't do mechanical inspections for our company, but he is knowledgeable enough to call it out when he sees it, when it requires a mechanical inspector through the city's building department to come out and look at it. We have found countless installations that had been done without permit. The city's policy on that is, if it was installed within the last five years, they essentially are required to retroactively pull that mechanical permit. And the city will send their mechanical inspector out to make sure it's been installed correctly, invented correctly, there's no carbon monoxide damage. And then every five years, regardless of a- And then every five years, regardless of age, we require anything that has a heat exchanger, like in a furnace, with a fuel-fired appliance like that. Because if the heat exchanger's cracked, which our inspector could never detect with the naked eye, it will leach carbon monoxide into the home and could kill somebody. So every five years, they're, the landlord is required to hire their own mechanical contractor to come out and give an inspection, and then sign off on its safety on a form provided by the city Building Department. So we take that very seriously, because that's considered a serious life safety. The other thing is, the state changed the housing law a couple of years ago that requires anytime we inspect and we find anything dangerous or a life safety violation, we are required by law now to notify the state of Michigan, and to give the tenant something in writing to inform them of what the circumstances are in their unit. At the same time, we're working with the landlord to hurry up and quickly get that repaired. I don't know exactly what the state does with it, other than I know they cross-reference it with their Section 8 data. And if it's at an address where they have a Section 8 voucher in use, then Michigan gets involved separately from the city.
Okay.
Those are the only things I can say.
Yeah, it's helpful to know that, because we're always kind of wondering what's happening. We know about the major concerns. We had a Thorncrest and even at Six Trails, but knowing that those are resolved. Is there any of that kind of information that we provide for landlords, or common issues that we provide on our websites or stuff?
We do.
To communicate that to them?
Absolutely. We give every landlord a detailed checklist when they register. These are the common things that people fail, that we're going to be looking for. We give them a photocopy of chapters three through seven of the Property Maintenance Code. The checklist is not all-inclusive, but here's the code sections that are in play here, so familiarize yourself with them. And those are also on your website. Like I said, for larger multifamily installations, or an especially problematic single-family or duplex, Brandon Boggs, the inspector, will go out and do, at no cost to the city or the landlord, will go out and do a walkthrough to help prepare them for success. And the end game is to make it as safe as possible for people living there.
Thank you. I'm glad that we're having that kind of relationship, and that's working that way. So I appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Harman?
Okay, so it looks like we have, let's see, over 1,000 renter-occupied units and only 830 registered. What's the plan to identify and register the remaining units that we have not?
We look for them every week. The way we do that is, our staff is constantly searching the internet for advertisements, rent advertisements, and they cross-reference the city's database to make sure that they're in the system. Occasionally, a tenant will come, file a complaint, make it turn out not to be registered. And we try our best to cut the tenant out of that, so that there's no retribution on them. We become the complainant on behalf of the city, and we compel the landlord to come into Those are the two primary ways. And then we also, we ask people. Every time a landlord says, "Gosh, you're coming after me, but what about all these other ones that aren't playing balls?" Tell us who they are. The good landlords surprisingly will, because they know that it helps level the playing field with the other landlords that defer maintenance constantly. They're providing clean, safe, sanitary housing that's code-compliant, and these others aren't. So it helps level the playing field for rent competition for good tenants with that landlord. So they very, very easily will tell us. I don't want to say, you know, tip us off, but they're helping us find the unregistered ones, yes.
So for some of these that you mentioned, that they're trying, is there a schedule? Like, so how long have they been trying? Like, I feel like a couple of these addresses have been trying for a long time. So is there clear next steps and a schedule? And what happens when they don't meet the schedule?
There is a process in place that has been replicated over and over. It is successful. If they cancel on us, most of the times what happens is, inspection gets scheduled. We probably have to chase them first to get them to register. When that happens, they pay the higher late registration fee. Then we schedule the inspection. Quite often, they'll call and cancel. They'll try to cancel, which will show up and turns out to be what we would call a no-show lockout, where we're there, the tenant may or may not be there, but no one from the landlord, there's no representative of ownership there. And we will not go in when there's just a tenant, unless the landlord has made previous arrangements with us for the tenant to represent them for that purpose. Sometimes we show up and there's, you know, there's nobody home, there's no landlord. We usually wait 20 minutes or so, try calling the landlord, and then, so when that happens more than once, we engage a little bit more sternly and try to find out what the problem is. And if it's, if we get the feeling that they're just avoiding us and kicking the can down the road as far as they can, we issue a citation. We post the property first, and in the fee schedule, there's a posting fee. Brandon will actually go out to the property and put an official "do not tear this" placard down posting that says, "This rental property is out of compliance." And a savvy tenant will know that they have the right to escrow rent at that point. We do that once. If we still don't get compliance, we issue a ticket to go to District Court here in Celine. And when we turn the ticket into the court, we do it in such a way that the landlord can't just run down there and pay the fine and keep doing what they're doing. We schedule a hearing, a formal hearing in front of the judge. We bypass the magistrate, go right to the judge, because the judge has equitable legal authority to issue orders. And then your city attorney will come to court with us, prepared to ask, with a court order, to ask the judge to sign, compelling them to comply. That's happened. I don't know, it hasn't occurred more times so far. But it usually only happens once per landlord, because it does get costly for them. And in the end, once they comply, they almost always say, "I wish I knew it wasn't so bad. I would have just done it."
So from the first, I see some, like, three appointments. So what is that duration? So I'm looking at one of these pending certification properties, and there's three different appointments. So like, if they haven't met, what's the time period that they have to meet?
I want to make sure I understand. So they're in the process, but they haven't yet completed it, and it just keeps dragging on?
I'm just looking at multifamily here, and it says we've got three appointments. So that means that they maybe have had, how long are the durations? You know, like, are we talking three appointments in a three-year period? Or three appointments?
I'm sorry, that acronym is apartments.
Oh, three apartments, okay. So what, I mean, I guess my question is, from the point where they need to meet compliance to us, you know, issuing them citations and going to court, what is that duration of the time?
It's never more than a couple of months. I would say that. But also, please be aware, if they register, we send them a scheduling notice for their very first inspection, say it's today, December 1st. Cancel, cancel, lockup, record. Eight months later, we finally get them certified. Their two-year cycle, certification cycle starts the day of the first scheduled inspection, December 1st. They can drag it out a whole year, and then one year later, we're right back to cert, recertified. They don't earn extra, they can't get out from under it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies, Mr. Atkins, I did not yield the floor to you. Is there something you would like to add to the conversation?
With the fee schedule that was approved earlier this evening, for rental, those have been updated to reflect any increases that are in this proposal. And we'll continue to do that for the next three years at this point, to represent the 5% increase in certain fees.
Thank you. And then I just have one question, and it can be for either of you, which is, does the city have a mechanism or the CWA where tenants, like a confidential number that they can call, is there a contact number for you or the city if they want to sort of self-report that there's an issue? I know that for years, what sort of brought about Thorncrest was people were going on social media. And that's not really necessarily the best avenue, the direct avenue to get your attention. And so, but I think there's also, that I want to make sure that they have that confidentiality aspect, so that they're not in fear of retaliation for them. So I don't know if that's something we have or we can do moving forward, if you even feel like there's a need for it.
Typically, they call office directly, and if Brandon or Stacy are in, they request them. Otherwise, if there's a complaint, something that needs immediate attention, you know, this time of year, heater's not working, we'll notify Brandon or Stacy, and they'll get on it right away. But...
It's difficult to remain anonymous.
Yeah. We need details for certain things.
Right.
We do get calls, but they're not so frequent that it's overwhelming at all. So they have Brandon and Stacy's contact and emails, so we haven't, nobody's ever said they, never heard back from us.
That's awesome.
And our staff hands out the cell phone numbers like that to everyone.
I appreciate that. And as you had mentioned, actually, heat was the one thing right now that I was most concerned with, because that's, it's hitting that point of the year where understanding whether people have heat or hot water is very important. So...
The ordinance also has a section on harassment.
Okay.
If the tenant does file a complaint and you get some kind of retribution harassment from the landlord, we can ticket the landlord and get them in front of the judge to answer for those bad behavior. It works the opposite way, too, with tenants. Nobody can harass the inspector.
Can I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I have to say, in my short tenure on the city council here, you know, you guys, between the community director and yourself, you know, this is one of the few programs that I've actually been here for most of the, and I can't think of any program that I've sat up here and listened to that has achieved the amount of stuff that you've done for residents of the city in such a short amount of time, under budget, that I've heard. So I give you guys lots of credit, because if everything ran this smoothly in government, we wouldn't have to be here for two-hour meetings, so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Well, if there is nothing else, then we will just vote on our motion that was moved by CO, seconded in by Lesch, to acknowledge and approve the Carlisle Wortman and Associates' Rental Inspection Services Contract Renewal for January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2028. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that is the last of our action items, so we move on to the discussion portion of our meeting. We'll start with Mr. Lesch. Do you have any reports or other announcements?
Fire board meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the fire station, going over audit.
Thank you very much. Mr. CO, do you have any reports or announcements?
The only thing I would say after my last experience during the last few weeks is that anybody who takes the People's Republic of China as a second-rate power or entity does so at their own peril. Those folks are on the move, they're on the go, they're very capable, and I was very impressed by what I saw while I was there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gerba?
Just a couple items. Planning Commission will meet on the 10th. We're going to be discussing Ann Arbor Soccer Club, special use of a building or...
Yeah, Ann Arbor Soccer Club. It's 1271 North Industrial, the, one of the facilities that housed bank supplies. It's right next door to Celine Area Social Services.
And we will not be hearing anything on Lot 28 at this time, correct?
Not this, not next week.
And then I just want to invite everyone out to the farm this weekend, on Sunday, on Sunday, December 7th, I believe it is, from 12 to 3:00. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be arriving at 1:00 o'clock, and we hope you'll come out and celebrate the holidays with us at Christmas at Renshler Farm.
I don't have any updates.
Okay. The only one that I have got right now is just an announcement, which is to just make sure that everyone is aware and invite everyone downtown this weekend. We've got the Koko Crawl happening, Main Street-sponsored event, which will be all day on Saturday, followed by the Christmas tree lighting, which will be at 5:00 PM, followed immediately by the Merry Mile Race, followed directly after that by the parade, which starts at 6:00 PM. And so I think that's it on discussion. So moving on, we have two items. We'll start with metric marketing. I think there was a handout that people received. Mr. Swallow, did you want to take the lead on that, or was that just informational?
Thank you, Mayor, for attending council. This is just a brief written summary of where we stand with this contract. In essence, we are starting month three of the contract, even though it's been delayed somewhat initially started off with. So during months one and two, basically, we had to kick off the Celine Communications team, documenting current communication channels, wins and struggles. That's been ongoing, but preliminary review has been completed. Audit of the city website, one of the things that we're working on there, and Mr. Schonk is working with, we have a refresh through our contract with Revised, which is our website provider. And so trying to coordinate those two, looking at the, looking at the website, what information needs to change. And obviously, this metric marketing information will, will provide information as to what we want to change on that website. Survey, provide you a copy of the draft survey that was prepared by metric marketing and submitted to the city. Gathering marketing assets and city-managed communication platforms that is completed, actually, tracking traffic on the website, tracking our social media, so starting with that. Just starting now is developing brand guidelines and logos and fonts. They give you some examples attached to this, of some of the preliminary information that they have submitted. And also, they have started analyzing our internal communication tools. Brief update on where we stand on that contract, and where it delayed in this contract, so we have suspended payments as of month three, because that's where we're just starting that work now.
Thank you very much for that update. Were there any questions from the dais? Mr. Gerba?
Just real quick, can you identify again who the leads are with this in terms of staff and council reps or anybody else?
Chris Schonk and Sarah Massey are the leads, and I've been meeting with them pretty much monthly to try and get an understanding of where we stand.
Thank you. Ms. Harman, did you have a question?
Yeah, so where it says, I see the different logos, and we're not directing them to change our logo, because that would impair a lot of, like, asset updates and costs associated with that. That is not part of the directive, right? I know that was one of the questions that a lot of us were concerned about, that they were spending time on relogoing.
Did they spend some time on the logo, but they've been directed that, you know, that's not going to be changed at this time?
Okay, so we're just talking about the guidelines of our brand and the usage of our logo. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Just one point. By the way, the date is wrong again on this handout related to founding of the city. It's 1866, not 1886. I pointed that out previously.
Do we know when this survey is going to hit and how it's going to be disseminated?
Looking at that right now, and so that is under their contract that they would be responsible for that. I think probably after the first year.
Okay. And when it says it's submitted for review, who's reviewing? Is that under, are you signing off on that, or is that Mr. Schonk, or is that...
So marketing is doing the original reviewing, so Sarah, Sarah Massey, and Mr. Schonk, and then I will ultimately see this as well.
Okay.
Oh, I got it correct, I missed it. Village, 1866, not 1886. We were founded as a city in 1932.
Oh, thank you very much. The other item under discussion, Mr. Gerba had added Rec Center update.
I'm just, again, asking what's happening with the, I guess there was going to be a task force or something addition. Have people been identified for that yet, or what's going on with that?
First step, at your December 15th... First step, at your December 15 meeting, we will be presenting the, you know, formal recommendations from the Recreation Task Force. I've already did a presentation, asking you to acknowledge you received that. Yes, we've been transitioning the task force into members that want to take more of an implementation role. We have identified some group of that, as well as additional potential community members that have been asked to join that implementation team. The other item that I think you've been updated on is we have met with three potential partners, schools, bitsfield Township, and Washington County, on potential partnerships, and where they may be able to help or assist the city on that. So those are the three main areas that we've been working on.
And I understand that you provided some of that information previous, but I believe going forward that because of the seriousness and the significant deficit that's affecting operations of the city, Rec Center needs to be on every agenda. Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other announcements that need to come before us? Okay, so we'll move on to our last public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may now come forward to make a comment to city council. This comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Please note, council will not answer questions during the public comment. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Clerk, was there anything?
No.
Okay, so we have none. So we are moving on to the highlight of our evening, which is adjournment. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adjourn at 9:08. Thank you, Mr. Lesch. Thank you, Mr. CEO. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.